Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm calling to order. The City of San Leandro City Council, today is Monday, July 21st, 21st, 2025. Would a council member like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, Councilmember Vivas Walton. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azavito.
Present.
Councilmember Bolt.
Present.
Councilmember Simon is absent. Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowen is absent. Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Thank you.
So tonight with the appointments swearing in of a new member to the Arts, Culture and Library Commission at 10A. Per our standard practice, I'd like to move that up to Section 4 Recognitions in the Interest of Time. Any concerns? Seeing none, we will make that adjustment to our agenda. The City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or the California Fair Employment Housing Act. California Penal Code Sections 4.3 or 4.15 are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your message, please.
Thank you. If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute window for public comments, which will take place under Item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after Item 12, City Council Reports. Thank you.
Link to Item Number 3, we did have a close session today. There was extensive discussion on our two items, but we did not have any reportable action. So at this point in time, we will take Item 10A, which is a motion with respect to the appointment. Madam Clerk, I think you've got a very brief introduction.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a motion to appoint Andrew Azavito to fill District 1 vacancy on the Arts, Culture and Library Commission.
Councilmember Vivas Walton.
Like to move, please.
I have a motion by Vivas Walton. Councilmember Azavito.
Yes, I'd like to second it.
Okay. At this point in time, please vote.
All votes are in. Motion passes 502 with Councilmember Simon and Vice Mayor Bowen absent.
So do we have our new member for a swearing in? All right, there you are. Come forward, please.
I'm going to give you that. Raise your right hand. Mark it after me. I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you so much.
Thank you for volunteering to serve. We appreciate it. At this point in time, we're going to move to our consent calendar. Are there any amendments, items that anybody would like to pull? Okay, I'm just prior to taking a motion. Would you like to pull an item, Councilmember Aguilar? No? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I am going to go to the public for their public comment, and then we'll come back for any discussion slash motion. At this point in time, is there anyone from the public would like to address us on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand up online and zero cards in person.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself. Oh, wait, I don't. All right.
Unmuting myself. Good evening, councilmembers. I would like to maybe, maybe. 5A, 5E, 5F, who knows what else? So I just am remembering Ginny Madsen's excellent suggestion to consider the length of Eden Road, which in Item 5A, the city is vacating. I would like to understand what it means to vacate. Does that mean we're just ceding that street and that land to the county? Or, I'm not sure, but Ginny's suggestion was maybe have the Human Services Director look into the possibility of establishing a safe parking area. That would be a great place. It's kind of isolated and wouldn't bother too many people. In Item 5E, I noted this is a traffic signal project, and we're having another problem with cost overruns. This authorizes anywhere from 25 to 43, almost 50% increase in the thing. And it just seems to me like this isn't like a demolition where you come across asbestos, and now we gotta do a big thing. Like, when this thing was priced out, it should have been pretty clear how much it would be, and I just think we need more oversight. Likewise, on Item 5F, which is the animal welfare services provided by East Bay SPCA. I remember in canvassing for various candidates, house to house, there are many complaints among our neighbors who care for the community cats, who are outdoor cats, probably in many cases, feral cats, and a lot of suspicion about what is or what is not done in terms of the Animal Care Control Officer from San Leandro facilitating transfer to the SPCA. And I'm just wondering whether we ever have evaluated this contract and what exactly is done. You know, I went to a meeting last week. They assured me the officers are all well-intentioned, but, you know, I don't know.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no further comment. Public comment?
So we will close public comment. Councilmember Aguilar, am I correct to assume that you would like to make a motion? Okay, so I do want to ask a question specifically with respect to 5E, because I think I also noticed the cost increase. And so it would be useful, city manager, acting city manager, if someone could explain a little bit about this cost increase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will refer to city engineer Jason Imay.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. That is a good question. So during construction, we were informed by PG&E that we would have to relocate the location of electrical service meter that provides electrical power to the traffic signal. And the cost increase that you see there, requested in the staff report tonight, reflects the additional costs to design both the relocation and construct it per PG&E standards.
I think the natural follow-up question from the public, et cetera, would be, could we not have known that in advance?
That is a good question. Unfortunately, due to staff turnover, I'm not exactly sure how much or how much we did not coordinate with PG&E, but we will take this situation to heart and especially the discussion that happened last Monday. And we will be diligently working with PG&E at the onset of each project from moving forward.
Thank you. At this point in time, I've got a motion from Councilmember Aguilar, and then Councilmember Vivas Walton.
Second.
The second from Councilmember Vivas Walton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes are in. Motion passes 502 with Councilmember Simon absent and Vice Mayor Bowen absent.
At this point in time, we'll move on to any reports. According to my notes, I don't think we have any reports today, so we'll move on to Item Number 7, which is opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda. So if you'd like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, please make sure you've filled out a speaker card already. And then, Madam Clerk, how many do we have in person and online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment in person, and I have three hands up online.
Okay, so do I see, is that a hand to speak on this item? On something else? Okay, so this is for items that are not on our agenda. So at this point in time, we will take online comment, please.
Thank you. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
Sorry, it took me a while to find the unmute. So thank you for letting me speak. I am basically going to say something about the Rules Committee meeting last Thursday and how vulnerable I felt with some of the people that were there, not residents of San Leandro, but paid lobbyists coming to our city to tell us how to do things. And they get paid to do this by groups that have a lot of money. This is just so painful for me, but I can't ask tenants to show up and give public comment at any of the outreach meetings if they're going to be subject to this, because this happened back in 2023, where we were, I was shouted down. I was not allowed to talk. If you're going to do outreach meetings, I'd like the city to provide some sort of player that will allow people to put a comment in through the internet. That is still an ask, a big ask for a lot of people I know, because they have to go to the library to get online. But I think the city can at least do some copies. And I don't know who invited the individual from the California Apartment Association, who is the individual that was responsible for paying people to speak at the Concord Meeting, City Council Meeting, against rent stabilization? They paid them $250 to show up, and I don't want to see that happen in San Leandro. I'm really upset about this. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. He Edwards, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Is this the appropriate time to protest or object to delinquent code violations? We received a notice in the mail.
That will come in approximately 30, between 30 minutes and an hour. That is Item 8B on our agenda.
Then we will wait till then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Acosta, you may unmute yourself.
Deborah Acosta, San Leandro resident and business owner. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here this evening to enter into the public record a summary of the June 13th lawsuit by former city manager Fran Robustelli, which names the city and details a pattern of misconduct by three councilmembers, putting San Leandro at serious legal and financial risk. Many residents still don't know that Councilmember Fred Simon was formally censured last December following an independent investigation that upheld Ms. Robustelli's complaint. Yet he continues to deny wrongdoing. This lawsuit is the direct result, and now we all face the consequences. The complaint outlines charter violations by Simon Aguilar and Azavito, including attempts to push a tiny homes deal involving the Dwong family and Evolutionary Homes, now tied to a federal investigation and the fall of former Oakland Mayor Shing Tao. But the most devastating impact was personal. Ms. Robustelli became seriously ill after months of harassment. She didn't simply resign. She was driven out. That is constructive termination, and it was preventable. She brings three legal claims against the city: whistleblower retaliation, retaliation for refusing legal to approve illegal acts, and gender discrimination. If she prevails, and the city's own findings suggest she will, San Leandro could face major financial damages with no reserves, even a modest payout could lead to cuts in essential services. Councilmember Simon, in absentia, if you cannot take responsibility and change your behavior, you should resign. Let voters choose someone whose values reflect a resilient, ethical future, and someone who instinctively understands what's possible in a world where women are safe, and we're saying no isn't punished. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I'm going to respond briefly to the two previous speakers. One, you know, I noted the lawsuit that former manager Robustelli filed, and I would just note that the standards of evidence in a court of law are much more stringent than they are in a city council censure motion. Two, I want to back up what Ginny Madsen said. I also was at the Rules Committee, and found astonishing the number of non-residents there as lobbyists and landlords who outnumbered the residents probably two to one. So I think, you know, we should really be mindful of the dynamics at work. Now for some good news. About two hours ago, I had the great pleasure of driving on some fresh asphalt on Bancroft Avenue, and I'm so happy that that project is coming to an end. I didn't realize how much it was affecting me emotionally. And I also want to extend thanks to the city for being better about communicating, like the closure today and tomorrow, and when Mayor made his PSA about what was going on and why it was so delayed. I had a good time last weekend, as many of us did, at Victoria's Circle, planning, what is it, Miyawaki Forest, it seemed like. It's really good that the water's being turned off for grass and that irrigation is going in for the trees. You know, beautify San Leandro is really a great invention, bringing together many volunteers. I just will note, like, most of the trees are kind of oddball, and a lot of them are like from down south, Catalina Island, and they don't really fit with the ecosystem here. Like, if we could just put in one coastal live oak, that would be great. There is another half of the circle, so maybe it will happen there. Wondering when Memorial Park will become accessible by taking down the fence? Seems like it's ready to go.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there's no more public comment online, but we have one person in person.
So let's close online public comment, and we will take our in-person comment.
Jim Bischoffberger?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. This has been an ongoing problem for three years. I am a born and raised San Leandro resident. I've had the police out to my house four times, including two times in 2024. I was illegally ousted by the San Leandro Police Department, two officers, threatened with the arrest of my two underage daughters at the time, and my wife. And we were put into the street, threatened multiple times, and loaded into the car and taken to a hotel. And I really feel that this is dehumanizing. I have the deed to my home. I have all the police reports. I have the lawyer that did my mother's irrevocable trust. So I'm not sure what's going to happen here tonight, but I know that I have emailed each and every one of you on the city council. And the only one to reply is Mr. Aguilar. And still, I am still battling this. And I really need access to my house. There's my parents' ashes. There's my flag that my father fought for, for this freedom. I just don't understand. I have just as many rights, all the rights. And still, I go to the home, and I'm sorry, you're going to be arrested. Please articulate what I did. There is no complaint, no investigation, no evidence, no judge order, no warrant, and no UD. I have the paperwork here, and I have no assistance. I have no help from any of you. For three years, my daughters are losing time, education, money, opportunities, possibilities? What does it take? I don't know. Based on one lie, they had a private conversation in my house, the officers, they came out and became hostile towards me and my family. Is this right? I grew up here. I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm a college grad. I graduated high.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
So a close public comment. But I would recommend, before you sit down, if you feel comfortable speaking with Captain Ali Khan in the back. Okay, so at this point in time, we're going to move to our next item on the agenda. Let's just proceed with item, you know what? We do actually have. We do actually have a speaker here for 8B. This is the liens piece. Do you guys have any objections to us doing the liens piece first? Because I think, big picture, that's going to be a shorter item, and we'll get targeted public comment, then we'll come for the longer discussion. So for the sake of efficiency and meeting the needs of residents, can we please go to item 8B on our agenda? And then we'll come back to 8A shortly. So for 8B, this is a public hearing. It's a public hearing, broadly speaking, with respect to the imposition of liens.
All right. Well, and thank you for having me up here today. I'll be presenting on our annual liens for our delinquent accounts. First, I'd like to just point out that we do have a resolution change we added, and you'll have it on your, it's called a desk item, and there are copies available for people, and they were put a copy on your desk, and that the addition of that was we were advised by Legal to add a statement at the bottom that just really iterates the ability for the city manager, the designee, to opt out of putting on any one account to the final role if it's deemed in the city's best interest. And so I just wanted to point that out. Okay, so it started. So the San Leandro Municipal Code allows the city to collect certain delinquent fees through assessment on the property tax bill. And these are mainly related to public safety, and they allow the city to collect fees and effectively not burden unfairly the whole entire city for specialized services that were given to one particular resident or property. And these are related to Solid Waste, CUPA, which is Certified Unified Program Agency, which is an environmental environmental permits that mostly, if in our city, involve underground storage and monitoring. We have code enforcement and compliance, sidewalk and driveway repair, fire inspections of multifamily units, and wastewater user charges for commercial only because residential are done on the property tax. So the process involves an initial billing or citation that is given to the wherever the service was rendered, and that's done in either conjunction with through finance or through a department initially, and then handed over to finance for continuation. Or with ACI, they handle the billings themselves. They are then given monthly statements, and this continues with, we also work with any questions that come up. We also will work with departments and the residents as necessary, and sending them a legal notice starting in May. We'll send an option with the intent to lean on the May, June, and then July to get those three notices. And then we ask, we'll have, we take it to Finance Committee, which we did last month, and then we come here to you, in which we hold this public hearing. And then finally, we will continue to work with residents to take payments or make payment plans or work out some sort of a resolution before we assess in early to mid-August to the county assessor. So this is the lien summary as it stood sort of last week when this was due. We have had a few updates. Notably, we've had a couple of people from Solid, from ACI pay. We've had three CUPA people pay. We've had about 10 of the code enforcement and compliance pay. And I want to note here that the code compliance and enforcement, out of that million dollars, we have had, we have two really big accounts. One is about $700,000, which has to do with the property that Community Development is working with to get developed and to make into safety. And we do not anticipate actually taking that to the assessor. And then we have one that's about $150,000, which is being sold, and we have been in contact with the escrow company, and they anticipate making payment on that one. So what we're requesting here is we're holding this public hearing, and then we ask you to adopt a resolution to overrule protests, and then adopt a resolution for us to have the ability to impose liens for any accounts that are deemed eligible and that have still not paid or made an arrangement by the deadline. And we have not been designated by the city manager or the designee to be in the city's best interest to withhold from the assessment. Thank you very much, and I'll take questions.
Okay, so at this point in time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the public hearing to hear from anybody in the public that would like to speak. After that, we will come back for deliberation discussion before entertaining motion and all that kind of thing, further questions. So at this point in time, it is 7:28, and I am opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no public comments in person, but we have two hands up online.
Please, so we will close public comment in person. We're going to open public comment online.
P. Edwards, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. We're responding to object or protest fees. Thank you for that explanation. My concern is, we received a citation for a building owned at 464 East 14th Street for graffiti on November and January of $100 and $200 respectively. In early February, after the rainy season, that graffiti was painted over, and fees of $300 were paid. It was graffitied again after that, and since then, we've received citations of $500 every two to three weeks through April for noncompliance. However, we complied and then painted it a second time. We received additional fees of $1,200 for a total, it was up to $1,700 in mid-March. We met with Kevin Senke of the City of San Leandro, who was a reviewer. He explained for the third time that we had to paint to please use the oil-based primer, and the fees would be waived. We did that on March 27. We met with him March 20. On March 25, we received another $500 fee for nonpayment, bringing it up to $1,700. Another one came on April 4, bringing it up to $2,200. The building has been compliant since March 27. In late April, we went back to the city, asking to meet with Mr. Senke, and was informed he no longer worked for the city. In May, we went twice to the offices. They were closed. Finally, was advised to email Jessica Perry Miller. We did that on May 30. Didn't get a response. Emailed again June 11. Got a response that we would get a reply. Still haven't, but got fined again another 500 for a total of 2,700. I just ask that if you're going to do this, please have two-way communication with the building owners.
Thank you. Elvira Bueno, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Marlim, and I'm here representing Bueno Properties, the owner of 501 East 14th Street in San Leandro. And I am also requesting a review of the delinquent building citations and a waiver of $14,000 in fines. We purchased a vacant property with the intention of opening a restaurant, but it has been delayed. And despite the delay, we have continuously maintained efforts to maintain the property. We have rented and maintained fencing. We have hired monthly landscapers, repaired several times to remove graffiti, have also replaced broken windows. The issue that we are having was that we were initially unaware of the citations that they were being issued because they were being mailed to the vacant building and where we actually returned undelivered. The city has my email and my phone number on file, but never contacted me directly. Yet we continue to acquire weekly citations. We were not aware of these citations until, I believe it was on October 2024. My CPA, Martin Brusko, was contacted, and once he addressed the issues with us, we immediately began addressing the citations. While some repairs were delayed due to contractor availability, they were handled. And most recently, after making repairs, I received another citation on July 14. This was from Jessica Miller stating that the fence, that there was issues to the fence. I personally went to the property, inspected the fence myself. I recorded a walkthrough video and sent it to her. This was, I believe I mailed it out to her the day that she sent me that notice. I found no visible damages and emailed her the video, emailed her clarification on the issues, but have yet received a response. And again, the issue with us is the notification. If we had known that there were issues, we would have addressed them sooner, but again, no-
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
So the time is 7:32, and I'll close the public hearing. At this point in time, I will come back to council or questions that you may have of staff or discussion, exploration. Councilmember Bolt?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, we just heard people come on and explain their frustrations. First question is, I think this is something we can obviously sit down with on these respective positions and find out where the disconnect was, and sounding like somebody buys a property and they go to the vacant property. Yeah, all these things just don't seem right. So I hope that we do have that process in place. Can you speak to a process like that when someone's in this position and it sounded like $14,000 or $17,000? That just seems unreasonable.
Yeah, and we do have Jessica Perry and Tom Liao from Community Development that maybe could speak a little bit more about the process of enforcement and compliance. But I will say is that I know that we do have the, at least one of those people that we have heard from and we've been working with to make sure that their questions have been addressed and having the building inspectors look into it and working with them.
Okay, I don't know who-
If you don't mind, let's have Ms. Schultz add a little bit of extra color.
Hi, good evening. Assistant Director for Community Development, Evelyn Schultz. We do utilize fines as one of the tools in our toolkit to help enforce beautification and cleanliness and cooperation with all of our rules and ordinance requirements. We do have a maximum citation limit of $5,000 for single-family properties, but for non-single-family properties, there is no maximum. And it is challenging for the team to always track down current best contact information. For owners, we utilize the Alameda County Assessor's Office and the mailing address on record. And sometimes we do have people come forth and talk to us about not being aware, and we'll usually work with them. If the property is brought into full compliance, we are amenable towards reversing citations and/or not placing liens for properties that are fully compliant. So in many of these cases, it's tricky for certain owners to maintain compliance, and we know beautification is a council priority, so we do continue to use the tools available to us.
Okay, thank you. I think I heard what I needed to hear, like, just working with them and making sure that, you know, because whether they pay $100,000 or $10,000, the real goal is to make sure that it's painted and it's not blight in the community, not that we get paid money.
Absolutely. It's not a cost recovery program per se. We'd like to see the money go into maintaining and investing in the buildings and in the property.
That was my next point. Thank you. Okay, so the second question I had was the process that we get there. You had your timeline laid out, and it's gone now. I don't know if we could bring that back up, but there's, the very first step talks about liens and penalties. The initial billing, what, before one, what happened? Like, do they get three notices? Do they get one? How does that work?
Number one is just an initial billing. So they had either an initial service or an initial code violation, or like in terms of ACI, they had service. So-
So in the case of this, when we're talking about, say, the graffiti, there's not a, we don't just go out and go graffiti bill. We say, hey, you got this much time to clean it up, and then-
Yeah, so for community preservation, like graffiti complaints, we start with a notice of violation, and we give people a reasonable time depending on what the issue is, right? So for very egregious life safety issues, short timeframe, sometimes it's an immediate cease and desist, but for something like graffiti, we give people, you know, at least several days to, a week to address it. 15 days is our normal notice of violation period, and then that's appealable. So if somebody says like, oh, no, actually, this is not an actual violation, there's an appeal process. If it's not resolved by the noticed inspection date, then a first citation is issued, and those citations go into increasing amounts as time goes on. So yes, there are opportunities before this initial billing comes from finance to remedy the situation.
Thank you. One last question, and I said it on the last one, but this is truly the last one. I think it was one slide later, the next slide, you have the tally of how much the, yeah, this one, and it says here, like, where you see fire protection, wastewater changes, they had no violations until 25, 26. Is that because someone came online and now they're looking?
This, so actually, what we don't have on here is that often, this is where this stands as of now, but by the time it actually comes to, it's around August 8, we'll see a lot, we'll see even more paid. So we've usually had someone at this stage in wastewater. Last year, we also had two or three, but by the time it actually gets to August, they've paid. It's usually the same couple of people, and that they mostly will pay, I think, a lot. So like, yeah, we'll end up not actually having to lean anyone on that.
So specifically on the fire protection, you got 00 and then-
Oh, I'm sorry. On fire inspection, we had not, we had not sent these to lean because we, they had been billed through the fire department, and it's something that we took back on for the R2 specifically. And then we wanted to make sure that people had had adequate number, because it is an annual inspection. We wanted to really make sure that we had, were billing people and giving them a chance to, because of the change in records from the fire department, we wanted to make sure that, like, people who would come up and said, hey, this isn't actually the right owners, or this isn't, we actually got billed by the fire department, we actually paid them, you know, just to make sure the records were clean. We didn't want to do that until we really had a good records of what was outstanding. And then we also worked with Legal to make sure that we were, this was also something that could be assessed.
Thank you very much.
Let's remember Azavito, please.
Yes, most of my questions got answered, but about the graffiti issue, so they get a warning first, and basically, okay, what about if they get graffiti again? Can they prove it to you that it was cleaned and then they got more graffiti on it? Because I'm hearing from some business owners that they cleaned it, but they're still getting it tallied up, but it's new graffiti.
Yeah, the, it is the responsibility of property owners to maintain their property in a graffiti-free manner. And so when we come out for an inspection, we want to see it compliant. We want to see it meeting our codes and regulations, and if it's not, we will continue the enforcement for that issue. So it's important that property owners can have property managers that are visiting the site and that they're not outsourcing that to the city's enforcement team and waiting for us to come let them know they have graffiti on their building. So we are trying to be more firm in our enforcement so that San Leandro can be beautiful and people feel safe here, and we have more people wanting to invest in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Let's remember Aguilar, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I know this was presented in the Finance Committee meeting. Can you shine some light, just so folks are aware, as to the jump in 2025, 26 with regards to code compliance enforcement, where it goes from 25 to 26, $70,000 to $1 million? That it's one particular business-
Right.
To speak.
Yeah, and I'm, but let, um, would you want to hear about the one specific business or just the, because if, when we take out the, the seven hundred thousand and then the one fifty that we're being paid and then plus ten have, have paid, we're, we do have an uptick, but it, the, uh, result that we have now is closer to about a hundred and fifty thousand, which is more than last year. But there has, as Avalon has spoken to, that we have had an increase in comply, in having code enforcement officers out complying and trying to get the beautify up. And there was also with the TRL, the Tobacco Rehab Cell License Moratorium, there's also quite a bit of violations around trying to close down illegal, um, TRL shops.
Gotcha. And can you talk more to the two that have been fined?
Yeah, so, um, as the council knows, we've moved to more proactive code enforcement. Um, so we have, you know, had officers going out doing campaigns on East Fourteenth and in the downtown and looking at vacant lots. There have been new code, uh, requirements adopted by council that get to some of these issues. So, um, that's why you're seeing the uptick for sure in activity. Um, the major site, um, that is responsible for the bulk of this has been an ongoing case that we're working with, um, that, you know, has had a lot of challenges coming into compliance with the new vacant lot requirements that the council adopted. And we have found that the frequent citations are an effective tool to at least initiate a meaningful conversation about what needs to be done. Um, however, it is not the intention to, you know, place a lien of that dollar amount on a property that would potentially diminish its ability to be developed and turn around into something sustainable. So trying to walk that line between the carrot and the stick, if you will. Um, and that is definitely what drove this high number today.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Seeing no other discussion, do I have a motion? Better motion from Councilmember Aguilar.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bolt. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes are in motion passes five zero two with Councilmember Simon and Vice Mayor Bowen absent.
Okay, community development team, thank you, or thank you for what you're doing. Finance Manager Nunch. Community development team, you are up with item eight A. And this is also a public hearing. Um, and thank you for being willing to pivot with us. So at this point in time, we do have, I think, I'm assuming that is you, Assistant Community Director Avalon Schultz presenting.
One moment while we pull up the presentation. Right, um, this is a long time coming. Very pleased to be here tonight to, uh, speak with the council about updating our Parkland dedication and park facilities, development impact fees. We've been working with a team of consultants on this project since, um, twenty twenty-two. This is a follow-on to NBS's work on the, on the full update of our user fees. So the last phase of their scope with the city is to update our development impact fees. And we have Nicole Cassam here tonight from NBS. And we also have Will Soholt with Cosmont here, um, who has expertise in real estate development. And we felt his expertise would be essential for the conversation about impact fees and all things that developers consider as they look to where they might develop and how cost-effective that might be. So tonight's item, um, is actually coming out of two city council priority work plans, infrastructure and housing and homelessness. Um, it was also grown out of the housing element that was adopted in twenty twenty-two. We're a little bit late. We had originally anticipated bringing this to council in January of twenty twenty-five. Um, so we're about six months delayed in bringing this item to you. But it is part of our work plan and we've been diligently pursuing it, trying to balance these two topics. One is which to bring funds for infrastructure that's badly needed in the city and the other being, um, incentivizing housing and addressing homelessness. Um, so when we look at impact fees, the goal is to balance the infrastructure funding while remaining competitive for new development projects. And also bringing our fee structure in alignment with recent changes in legislation like AB six oh two, which calls for looking at square footage-based fees instead of just a blanket per unit fee. And so our consultant NBS developed the Nexus study to calculate legally defensible fees. And we had another consultant do market feasibility assessment. And so our consultants looked at a bunch of different fee categories. They looked at our park development fees, which tend to be some of the highest fees we charged to residential development. They also looked at a variety of new fee types to see if the market could bear and if we could legally defend having fees for all sorts of other capital needs that we might need to serve new development, like recreation centers, libraries, place and fire, et cetera. And they did not reevaluate our streets fees because the plan that is required for that fee to be calculated and updated will not be ready for some time. So that would have, uh, delayed by a very long time. Um, taking action on fees, which is, which is what we wanted to do per our housing element and work plans. And so the methodology that was used to calculate fees was based on proportionality. And it looks at what it takes to maintain current service levels for new development. And the idea is that new development should pay its own way and offset impacts to our, our interconnected facilities and services that we provide. The methodology complies with state law and ensures that new units are paying their fair share and that they would be based on square footage ranges, not by unit type, and that's to meet our legal requirements. So to talk about market feasibility, I thought first we would have Will Soholt from Cosmont do a brief primer about what developers are looking at when they look to underwrite. We've had a lot of questions from council about why we're not seeing more active construction in the city. Um, to answer Councilmember Viveros Walton's question from last week, we have about twenty-seven hundred units in our pipeline. And we want to see them proceed into construction, but there are many macroeconomic issues at play. So I'd like to bring up Will Soholt to talk to you about some of those factors.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. I'm Will Soholt. I'm with Cosmont Companies and Cosmont Realty. Uh, we're a, a firm that consults both for municipalities, counties, as well as developers. A lot of our work is structuring transactions between the two. We'll negotiate on behalf of a city or a public entity or a developer. I'm a, a licensed broker, uh, and we've been doing this type of work personally for about twenty years. Company's been around since nineteen eighty-six. Uh, so it was asked by Avalon and the team in the city, uh, to look at why, why isn't development happening? Really focusing on residential development primarily. Uh, and to just take a look at what's happening in the city, what's happening in neighboring cities and, and from the lens of a, of a developer to identify maybe what's, what's making projects stick or what's making things not happen. So generally, with respect to developer underwriting, there's things that you can control, there's things you can't control, and there's things that you really can't control, right? The kind of control are local market factors. And so when a developer comes to an area and evaluates, is this a good place? Or is there an opportunity to do development? These are some of the things they look at. And I'll first start by saying, generally speaking, developers, of course, are, uh, in the business of making a profit. They take a lot of risk. They do, uh, generate profit by taking risks, putting development into, into, uh, into actuality. Generally speaking, though, from a highest level, a developer will want to make sure that there's sufficient rent and sales values and positive growth trends. So our rent's high enough to support the cost of new construction and our rent's high enough to support the cost of development, cost of land, impact fees, all those good things, and the risk, of course. They look for proof of absorption and performance of similar product type. Uh, and so specific to the city, uh, they might look to like Central Callan and see that that is, in my mind, that's a new product type. A lot of the development you've had of late has been affordable housing, uh, pure affordable housing. That's kind of a separate entity in and of itself. That's got a separate funding source, uh, not, not driven by the market versus, uh, a building like Central Callan driven by the market, driven by rents. And so you may see that, uh, depending on how that product is absorbed and how it's rented up over time and how that building performs, you may see, uh, other enters, other, uh, entries in the market and other developers say, hey, this, this is working well. There's an opportunity for me here. Uh, competitive projects in the pipelines of supply, are there a lot of buildings planned, uh, right on the cusp of being developed? And if there are, a developer who's a little bit further down the, or, uh, further away from breaking ground, might say, I'm going to wait. I'm going to see what happens to these other products. I don't want to try and build something, uh, and then have to compete for, uh, residents, uh, while that product is leasing up. Demographic patterns such as population and income growth, it's kind of a catch twenty-two in that to drive, uh, demographic growth and, and, uh, population growth, you have to typically have more residential units. Uh, but looking generally as a region, is there population growth, is there income growth? And it doesn't have to be substantial income growth. It's just keeping up with inflation, driving, uh, supporting stronger rents over time. Proximity to employment centers and schools, people like to be where they're, where, near where they work, uh, want to live near where they work, want their kids to have a good opportunity to go to schools close by. Uh, and so those types of amenities are important. Quality of physical infrastructure and neighborhood amenities, I'll point to Central Callan again. It's a, it's next to a, of great and vibrant, authentic downtown environment. So residents can walk to whatever amenities they want to. There's an increasing desire, uh, to stay out of the car and be near, uh, those types of amenities. And that points to easy access and transportation options. Obviously, if you've got mass transit nearby, that's generally a, a benefit for newer, higher intensity development. Uh, and then resident readiness and appetite for new development. Is everything a fight in an area, uh, to design and build a new product that's reasonable? Obviously, they want to put a twenty-story high-rise in an environment that's not appropriate for it. But if there's something that's an appropriate scale and building intensity, is there, uh, opposition to it from the community? Or is there general support of it? Uh, and, and developers will look at kind of fact patterns, uh, within a community to evaluate that. And with respect to the things that, that you, uh, as municipal body can control, uh, you've got control of zoning. So intensity, upzoning potential, land use flexibility and in lieu options. Is the zoning clearly defined? Are there opportunities, uh, to go from, let's say, a two to a four-story building, things like that? The in lieu options, is there flexibility in parking? And a kind of a key word here, I would want to harp on is flexibility, uh, in terms of how processes and, and requirements are imposed. Is there an ability to deviate here and provide something, uh, instead there? Even within, within a building, uh, open space, things like that. Is there a way to actually comply with the intent of code? Uh, but flexibility that if something is just kind of outside the edges, can it be accommodated? Environmental review, how long does it take to get approvals? Uh, cost sharing, and this is heavy, uh, heavily based on SEQA. That's changed a little bit with AB one thirty. Uh, there's more, uh, more by right approvals available now than there were in the past. Uh, for a developer, in many cases, it would take ten years to get something entitled going through SEQA, right? You have a fight on every element of SEQA. So taking some of that off the table, uh, some cities take that off the table with a programmatic SEQA review as an example and saying, here's a blanket area that you could have a certain number of units. Developers, please come and build that. Plan review, so you can control, uh, how quickly plans are reviewed, the development standards, how clear is the code? Uh, how much, uh, how much difficulty does somebody have bringing a set of plans and going through approval? Uh, time is, is very much money in the development world. Development, uh, equity, the amount, the money that, uh, developers invest in a project is very expensive money and it takes a long time. If you think about building a building, uh, six years is easily the timeframe, right? And four of those could be doing work before even starting construction. You could have two years of construction. And in that timeframe, a lot of things can change and there's a lot of money that's outlaid. So to the extent that, uh, you can kind of control that timeframe and help speed it up, that's a benefit. With respect to impact fees, it says minimal fees, uh, really, it's, it's what's an appropriate fee, right? That you have to, you're in the business of providing municipal services. You have to fund those services. Uh, it's not a suggestion that you shouldn't have fees. It's just be responsive, uh, and re- reflect, uh, the environment and your surrounding, uh, competition, if you will, other cities and other development opportunities. Uh, the notion of deferring to project completion, I talked about the cost, uh, developers', uh, cost of money, uh, it being very expensive. Some cities elect to allow developers, uh, the option to defer, uh, the development impact fees until a project is completed. So rather than paying them at the start of construction, they pay them at the end of construction, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So that could take a couple of years off their, uh, plate in terms of putting that money upfront. Affordable housing, uh, and density bonus multipliers. Some cities elect, you know, the state of California, you've got density bonus law. Some cities elect to enhance those multipliers to make them even more financially feasible, uh, by providing affordable housing. So you get more units, things like that. That's not a perfect answer because you still are generally constrained in size. In many cases, I talked about a twenty-story building. Many developers don't want to go over four stories or five stories. It's construction type changes, construction cost changes with increased height. And so adding density may not be a solution for everybody, but in some cases it is. Uh, and then financially feasible requirements, to the extent that there are, uh, inclusionary housing requirements. Are those, uh, overly burdensome or can they be accommodated within a market approach? Political environment, stability, consistency and transparency. Uh, is the, you know, is the city council switching from one side of pro-development, anti-development from every, you know, every couple of years? Or is there generally support for measured, uh, continued predictable, uh, growth and support? And then built environment, quality and appeal of physical infrastructure assets and, excuse me, infrastructure and amenities. This goes to the park fees, right? How are the parks good? And so it's kind of counterintuitive or it's, uh, you know, it's a balancing act again, uh, of you, do you need to make investments in the community and the physical infrastructure, but can you do it in a way that's, uh, can be supported and is not onerous on, on development, on the feasibility of development? Uh, and then there's macro factors that are completely generally out of our control. Uh, so what's happening on, in the general market, the broader market, the US market, international markets? Uh, from a market valuation perspective, it's that the number one factor as to why things aren't happening right now is market valuation. We went from a, a position of, called a capitalization rate of four percent rate of return, basically a four percent cap rate a few years ago to now a five percent cap rate, rate of return is required, uh, on an asset to, for, in, in the market. And what that does is it immediately eliminates about twenty-five percent of value from a multifamily, uh, investment as an example. So if you had a building that was worth a hundred million dollars four years ago, if nothing else changed, no rent growth or anything else changed, that building would now be worth seventy-five million dollars, just like that, you know, four years. And there's nothing, uh, that an owner of a building or any of us can do about that. That's just, uh, the market, uh, and alternative investments. In terms of, uh, additional market factors, access to capital, uh, in times like these, uh, lenders tend to pull back and don't offer as much money or require a higher loan to value ratio. So instead of saying, if your building's a hundred million dollars to build, I as a lender will give you eighty million. They may say, I'm only willing to give you seventy million. And so that means a developer has to find that additional ten million dollars to put up a building. They need to make money on that ten million dollars. And so it's a cycle that, that erodes, uh, additional investment until those factors become back in balance. Uh, lending rates, excuse me, interest rates tied to market valuation as well. But what's the cost of borrowing money during construction upon completion? I think everyone has seen interest rates and, and knows interest rates have gone up, uh, of late in the last four or five years. Uh, and that impacts not only construction, but the long-term, uh, life cycle of, of a development. And unlike, uh, your single-family home or a home you might own where you can get a loan for thirty years and have that fixed interest rate for thirty years, in the commercial market, it's more common to have a five to seven-year loan that has to be refinanced, uh, every, every period of time and without the full amortization period. And so what happens with that, even if you talk about interest rates going up, uh, and that building valuation went from a hundred million to seventy-five million. Now the bank says, I'm only going to loan you up to seventy-five million, even though I loaned you up to a hundred million four or five years ago. And so that fundamentally, that owner, uh, is in a tough spot in many cases to bring more money to the table. Inflation, cost of construction materials, uh, we're seeing this, uh, with some of the tariff activity. A lot of the, the type of construction that we would see, the four or five-story construction is with, made with wood. Uh, we get a percentage of our wood, twenty, thirty percent, let's say, in the US from Canada. We may not be building with wood from Canada and Southern California, but that impacts the overall market and supply and cost of wood, things like that. Copper is another example. We use copper in the wiring, uh, what's going to be the impact of the inflation rates? Uh, and then revenue growth, uh, the rent growth, this is, uh, impacted and driven by alternatives in the market. So to the extent that other, uh, cities around us are, are developing a lot or bringing a lot of units to the market, that tends to suppress, uh, rent growth because there's more supply, keeps rent down because people have options uh, and alternatives as to where, where to live. Uh, and then sales price growth, that's mostly for single-family homeless. Bottom line, a lot of factors, you get to control a few of them, not a lot. But at the end of the day, uh, I'd say the answer to the question of why aren't things happening right now? Generally, I'd say it's broad market fundamentals and we've got to wait for, uh, there's, there's a, the notion is that interest rates come down a little bit, cap rates come down a bit, valuation will go up a bit, things will get stable. Right now, developers in general are very nervous, right? I talked about that building lifecycle, ten years, six years, takes two years just when you start construction. Easily takes two years to finish the product and then lease up. A lot can happen in that timeframe. So they want to know, uh, and have comfort that when they start construction, two years from now, things aren't going to be in a completely different world. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, uh, and I'll hand back the mic. Thank you.
Right. I'm going to skip ahead a few slides to make up some time here.
I'm going to skip ahead a few slides to make up some time here. Thank you, Will. I think that it's really helpful for the council to have the, you know, the full context of how developers are looking at these factors. So we've been working with Will and other firms to really understand market feasibility. And the overall feedback that we received is that there is no market here for new fees and increasing fees. We can restructure them in alignment with AB 602, but overall, our fees need to be right-sized so that they're competitive within our market area and that they make development somewhat feasible when those macro factors are in place. We don't want to hurt our position in the market if we'd like to see some new construction. And so as we look at what to do with this topic, we really need to look at balancing park creation, which can occur in, you know, a multitude of ways. Dedication by subdividing property owners, the city can buy parkland or repurpose existing city property for parks. And when we look at our newly adopted Recreation and Parks Master Plan, it talks about increasing funds available for improving existing parks, which is what these fees that we're proposing would do. Instead of the bulk of the money going towards land acquisition, we've proposed flipping it so that 75% of the new fees would actually go towards improving existing parks in alignment with the Parks Master Plan. We have not seen a lot of development except for Central Callan over the last 10 years. And we also have not seen a ton of park and lieu revenue except for Central Callan in the last 10 years. And so if we really want to look at balancing the kind of the one-time impact fee revenue over the positive effects of building new buildings and bringing new households to the community, we've got to think about, you know, right sizing those impact fees. And so we are recommending that we balance infrastructure with market feasibility with these new fees and uphold the council's interest in providing housing for all income levels by providing a fee waiver program for affordable projects and accessory dwelling units, which are naturally affordable. We are also looking for your direction on continuing to work on a public art requirement for new development that we would do and consult with Will to make sure it's not going to break the market feasibility. So the new fee structure is included in your packet. I like to think of this more as right sizing versus increasing or reducing. Smaller units would pay less, larger units would pay more, and we think that's fair and proportionate to the impact that they would bring. We've also run through our pipeline to look at some sample projects that we've had in the queue and see how they perform so that council has that information. In some cases, like the 497-unit project that was all studios pretty much, you can see a huge drop from the red current fee to the green proposed fee. And that's a reflection of how small those units were. They were previously being assessed at just that blanket per unit rate that's the same as a three-bedroom unit when really it was just a studio. So we do believe these new fees are more legally defensible. The fee waiver program would really incentivize 100% affordable projects by nonprofits. And we've heard that the inclusionary housing is a burden, can be hard for for developers to meet. So this would offer a 50% reduction for the affordable units in an inclusionary project to help, you know, help soften that blow, so to speak. We do have on the council newly adopted Housing and Homelessness Work Plan to tackle inclusionary by this time in 2027. So that would be the next project once this is completed. We'd get started on that soon. We already have a contract going for that work. And just wrapping up, I may have an additional minute.
It could take maybe three, three to five minutes.
Okay, oh yeah, we'll be done. The public art program is really critical. It is a part of the Public Art Master Plan, and it's a way that we can really add vibrancy to the community as new buildings go up. They can incorporate public art components, but they can also be really expensive. And so we want to, with council's direction, work on an ordinance in consultation with our consultants and with the library staff and the Arts Commission and understand how we can get more public art in San Leandro without inhibiting development. The finance committee generally expressed some support for the concept of a public art requirement. And they did talk about wanting additional context on the full picture, the market conditions, which is why Mr. Solholt was here today and why we added those additional slides to talk about all the factors and how this this one B proposal fits into the much bigger picture. One other big picture thing that our team is is working on is improving our development review process across all the departments. So we're working diligently on that. We've we've made great headway. So that's another factor that developers look to that that is in process. And so tonight, we are recommending that you hold the public hearing and adopt the ordinance to update our parkland dedication requirements for subdivisions and the corresponding fees for parks. And then the fee waiver program we described is included in your ordinance package and resolution package that would provide those exemptions for affordable projects in ADOs. And we do have our consultants here if there are any technical questions or staff can help answer any more general questions you have tonight. Thank you.
Perfect. So what I'd like to do is take the public hearing element where we hear from the public and then come back and we can have discussion, questions and go as long as we need to. But I would like to make sure that we take the public first. My council members are not opposed, so it is 8:07 and I am opening the public hearing on this item.
Mr. Mayor, we have two speaker cards for in-person and two hands up online.
Okay, what I'd like to do is make sure that everyone online who wants to speak has their hand raised. Because I'm going to go online first. And we will call out who's going to be available to speak based on having raised their hands. You've got, you know, five more seconds, raise your hand, and those will be the people that are eligible for public comment online. Five, four, three. Okay, so if you would take those two hands first, we'll close public comment online and then come in person.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. That was the most informative presentation. I just, you know, kind of want to weigh in on the the reality of quote unquote affordability. When we looked at the affordable units in Central Callan, you know, it didn't really seem all that affordable for people that are in the margins. And so I want to, you know, urge you to squeeze out every last little bit of savings to to make more affordable units available for more people. You know, we can certainly attract people to our city who are gainfully employed and, you know, making some hundred something more a year. But, you know, what about the the folks that are that are toiling on the edges? The other thing I'm sitting here wondering is, so so which of these many factors explains the stagnant status of Tom Silva's project over at Estadio and Bancroft? Since it was the the previously standing building was demolished, I haven't seen anything happen in months and months and months and months. The fence fell over, I recall, the fence got put back up, but like what, you know, like, come on. Central Callan actually went up in 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 pretty good time, I thought, and that that I I just felt encouraged about housing. But I go by that lot, you know, probably at least once a day, and I see it's just vacant and it it's depressing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you for letting me speak again. So my name's Ginny Madsen and I think it's a great idea to stop putting money into acquisition of parkland and start putting money into making the most of what we have. We have some great things in San Leandro. It's a and we need to enhance that. We need to care for it. That is what people see and experience. And I'm also, I'm I'm sorry, I'm a third-generation Californian. In my entire lifetime, this idea that the only thing that makes a place worth developing is that it's going to make more money, more money, more money. This is not what built California, that is not what built the Bay Area. Housing needs to be for people. And if you why don't you just bring all these people that want to make more money, that are all profit-driven, and have them move into a city and see what happens? No one will want to live there in another 50 years. San Leandro needs to look at what really matters here. Why people come here, why they stay here, why they like it. I'm going to stop talking now because I'm too emotional. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have no more hands up online.
So we, our closing public comment online, that part of our public hearing, and then we'll come in person to hear from our public here.
Brody Scotland.
Hi. I'm Brody Scotland, Chair of the Arts, Culture and Library Commission. I would like to encourage you to move forward with the development of the percent for art public art requirement. As part of my work with the commission, I had a meeting with one of the large developers in town. They were surprised that San Leandro did not have a percent for art requirement, and they were ready to pay it if we did. I'd ask if they just, you know, give us the money anyway, but I guess it doesn't work like that. Art isn't just about sculptures or murals. Art is about building community and civic pride and identity. Even arguing about art builds community. It means people care about the visual landscape where they live. Having a percent for art requirement doesn't mean just being able to plop some art down and call it good. It's the beginning of the possibilities. It means things like being able to develop an art trail through the city with maps that show public art and bike lanes to visit it and places to stop at restaurants or to have a beer or hang out. It means having more than just one iconic art piece to figure out, to feature on those banners on East 14th Street. And I will point out that that artwork, Truth is Beauty, was installed as part of a developer agreement with the city. Have this wild dream that San Leandro can install an existing artwork created by a local nonprofit arts group. It's a giant rainbow that is 75 feet long, 30 feet high, has thousands of LEDs. Imagine getting to install this at the marina where approximately 50 planes full of people pass by daily on the final approach to Oakland International Airport. That would attract some attention and some photos, don't you think? Giant friendly rainbow visible from the air. What kind of city might do such a thing? It must be a city where kindness matters and they care about inclusivity and the arts. Thank you in advance for caring about the arts.
Thank you. Stephen Cassidy.
Good evening. I'm also on the Arts Commission, and this is just an exciting evening. It's something that I think we've all been waiting for. And here's the chance to actually refer the development of an ordinance to the Rules Committee related to public art. I've talked to many of you in the past and and also to city managers. And the answer was always, we have to wait for the impact study to be completed. It's been completed. You may, and it was mentioned that years ago, we had an Arts Master Plan developed for our city, and the number one recommendation was have a public arts requirement. Well, let's not make the perfect the enemy of the good. I mean, obviously, there's a lot to figure out. You know, do we apply it to housing? Do we apply it to, you know, developments of X-type or Y-type? That can all be figured out by the Rules Committee. But what we need to do today is, for four of you at least, is to say, yes, let's have the Rules Committee work on this, figure out that, come back to the full council for a decision. That would be just wonderful. And you have empirical evidence as to how this works, that being the truth is beauty. We only have that because there literally was in the development agreement a 1% for the arts requirement. Now, I just wanted to mention just briefly, you know, I get asked sometimes, why do I care about the public art so much? Well, in part, it was inspired by my travels. When I was in college, I went to Mexico for a summer to learn Spanish. Did not quite do that, unfortunately, but I was just amazed by the murals in particular. I was in Guadalajara and saw the Jose Orozco murals. I visited Mexico City and saw the murals by David Seguin and Diego Rivera. I went to the Hotel Prado where one of the most famous murals by Rivera was there. Unfortunately, of course, the terrible Mexican earthquake destroyed the hotel, but the mural itself was saved. I mean, art inspired me and it can inspire future generations.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
Okay, it is 8:16 and I'll close the public hearing. At this point in time, we're going to come back to council for deliberation, discussion, questions. The floor is yours, Councilmember Bolt.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. I am in my head doing cartwheels because I'm so excited about hearing this this type of conversation and it not being pointed at labor as if labor was what's breaking the back of development. So I commend you for that and really focusing on some of the other issues out there. I'm not saying labor's not a part of it, but all too often when we get in these situations, it's labor, labor, labor. So thank you for that. Some of the things that you were saying about people waiting, we see that everywhere, right? Everybody rushes to get through the gate, to get their project to be the first one. And then if you're not the first one, you kind of pull back on the reins to make sure what you want to build is feasible. So all of the things you're saying, I was, yes, this is great. I do want to commend Avalon and echo Ginny Madsen's comments about focusing on what we have, not trying to build more, but just make what we have greater because we do have some really nice parks and they can use some of this. These fees, you know, in lieu of fees not going to new but to bolstering what we have. So and and the way you explained it of like, I forget the exact words you used, but it was kind of like a readjustment, not necessarily going up or down. We're in the right spot. Let's make sure it works. And then the one graph that you show with 497 square feet is paying as much as something bigger. No, let's pay our fair share. That's, I think, this, everything about this, I'm I'm really in line with. I really appreciate it. And I'll end on seeing former Mayor Cassidy up here smiling and me being on the same side as him for once. I like it. I I like the idea that we're working in this direction and and, you know, sending it back to rules and and getting some more input. But yeah, I I've talked to a few developers as well. And 100%, they were saying, yeah, I was surprised we didn't, you didn't have it. So, you know, it's just time for us to do it, and I think it'd be very beneficial to us. So I'll stop there. Thank you. For your support.
You, Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Avalon and Will for the presentation. I just had a question with regards to the Westlake contract or the Truth is Beauty statue was purchased and brought on property is. And talking with Cosmont, is in working together, is this something that could be potentially possible to have as a new development 1% requirement for new development to go towards public art? I know that we cut funding for the Library Arts and Cultural Commission to have that go towards that particular commission to decide on on art that we can bring into the city.
Yes, so in the past, the city team has negotiated art requirements through specific development agreements where we had some additional leverage. This ordinance of council directs us to prepare one and work with Rules Committee, would codify a requirement for all projects, not just the ones that have development agreements. And we can craft which projects those are and what the terms are. And the idea is that they would either provide art on site as part of their project approvals or at either the developer, or we could write it so that it's the city's option. They could also pay a fee instead that could be compiled and the commission could help direct where those funds should be spent for public art for the benefit of the broader community. So absolutely, that's the plan. And we're just looking for some direction to to work on that.
And that's you know, we're having, we're going back and forth on this, but that's the direction I would like to give staff is to move forward with bringing that to Rules Committee with a 1% ask of development that they have, they separate or put that into a bucket for public art that should be available to the community. I think, you know, what what former Mayor Cassidy had talked about with public art in Mexico City, like I've traveled there and the public art there is amazing. Public art in Hong Kong, public art in Paris, public, I mean, it's just, go on and on. Actually, true story is, I got married at the base of the Truth is Beauty statue. The only wedding to happen in San Leandro at the tech campus. That's where my husband and I tied the knot. And so that's, that place is something that is very special to me. So I think that that is our direction, like to give staff. So I think that that is a direction like to give staff. My question with regards to, you mentioned inclusionary and talking about being lenient with regards to inclusionary housing. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, so we do understand that our current inclusionary ordinance is quite aggressive compared to a lot of cities in that we require 15% of units built on site to be affordable to various income levels. And there's not a, you know, a very clear in lieu fee option in the code. So we are going to be working on inclusionary very soon, and it's in the work plan. In the meantime, if a developer builds those units on site, the fee waiver program we're proposing would provide a 50% discount on the park fees for the affordable units in the development. So it's a way to help incentivize those, produce, you know, producing those units on site under our ordinance. That's what I was referring to.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then I know that, you know, with Will, your background and this, in this development world, bringing hotels to Redondo Beach and what have you. I think, you know, San Leandro has a missed opportunity on TOT tax. And that is something that I highly harp on and advocate to bring in hotels to San Leandro. I think that's a, that's a huge missed opportunity. But anyways, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll go to Councilmember Veris Walton.
Thank you. I was looking at one of the attachments and, oh, I was actually looking at the NBS report, the impact fee study. I'm trying to figure out in terms of the data sources. So we, some of the information on population income and housing comes from the census. But what are some of the intermediary data sources that you use to calculate population income and kind of tracking that projection? Just trying to figure out, kind of looking ahead, what our community might look like and then thinking, you know, what are, what are some of the policy contours that we want to put in place, kind of looking ahead as to what our popular art city might look like in the future?
Yeah, I can, I can start with the popu, are you speaking mostly about the population projection? Like how many people we expect to come to the community?
Yeah, but also like some of the things that the census tracks are income levels, housing. And so what are some of those data sources in between each 10 years that we look at to kind of make those kinds of projections?
I'll speak to the projection question. So when the city did its 2035 general plan, it had population projections for the community out to the horizon year of 2035. And there are regional and statewide data sets that we look at that extrapolate how many people they think our population will be at by certain time periods. Those can also be very aggressive, very large numbers. And so for the assumptions in this study, we looked very carefully at our pipeline of approved projects. We looked at the development trends that we've been seeing since the general plan was adopted, which have not been as aggressive as were maybe anticipated. And so we wanted to make sure we had a reasonable population projection when it came to calculating the fees. Because if you assume that build out is going to be, you know, 50% of the current population is going to be added, the fees you would result with would be very minimal in proportion. And so we wanted to make sure that it was an accurate prediction. So we really tailored it to our development scenario and our pipeline projects. I will turn to Nicole Kassam to talk about the other, like, data questions you might have about the 10-year estimates, if they're separate from that question. Thank you.
Evening.
Hi.
Would you mind repeating your questions where I might be able to clarify further?
Yeah, I mean, so Avalon already answered the kind of the population question. But yeah, when I think about looking ahead in terms of what is the policy environment that we want to set, I am particularly, one, concerned about ensuring that the people that are currently here stay here. So I'm looking at like, what are some data sets that we look at to look at changes in the income levels of various, like various community kind of slices? So it just, so what are some of the data sets that you use in between census that you look at to project growth in a certain, like, income level or decline of population in a certain income level?
Really doesn't come into play in terms of the work that NBS does to calculate the fees. So Avalon, that would really go back to like the SEIR and all of that, right?
Yeah, and I might, I might, we tend to do most of our projection work during the big general plan updates.
Okay.
And otherwise, we're more looking at the census or ACS data and identifying what's happening. But we don't tend to project changes in demographic data.
Okay.
Like you're describing.
Okay, so the American Community Survey is the ACS you're referring to? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then just kind of switching over, I'm just gonna kind of name the obvious. So this only applies to residential, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And this might be, actually, this is not germane to this conversation. Those are all my questions for now. The rest are comments. Thank you.
When you said it only applies to residential, which item were you referring to?
The, the park improvement impact fees per unit.
Only residential.
Yes. The art direction we're seeking would be broader, and we would figure out applicability throughout that separate process.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'm going to go to some of my questions. Let's start with, I think this might be a legal question. I know there's some discussion about our current method based on, is it, current method is not legal or apparently not legal or needs to be changed for assessing these fees.
AB602 requires that when you update your fees, you do it in this new way. So if we left the old fee alone, it's not illegal per se, but it does open us up to challenge because it might overstate fees for small units. And the development trends have changed substantially since 2005, which is when the fees were last overhauled.
Thank you for the clarification. The expression residential subdivision is used. So I'm just trying to take something like Central Callan. Would that qualify as residential subdivision?
No, thank you. So subdivisions take one piece of property and they divide it into separate, smaller, conveyable parcels. So like a townhouse development might subdivide. It's for ownership, like a condominium or a single family or townhouse unit that you can purchase, not lease.
So for example, and these are all hypotheticals, but we've got some current entitlements for apartments. If those entitlements expire, but someone seeks to build, a new developer says, I want to build an apartment complex on the same land, because by the way, you guys already approved it. This sort of adjustment would not apply to that project, assuming that it's one big building on the same parcel of land that was being developed before?
So we're doing a variety of things with, with our proposed actions tonight. One addresses how much land a residential subdivider would need to give the city for parks. The other is we're, we're proposing the restructuring of all the residential park fees, including for rental projects. So the other key piece for council is that fees are calculated at time of building permits. So these restructured fees would apply to any projects that haven't pulled building permits yet.
And then to distinguish between entitled projects, they have permission to build a, but they haven't actually pulled permits to turn dirt, put up foundation, et cetera. Would those new projects be subject to these fees? They're entitled but have no demonstrated progress of development?
Yes.
Thank you. There was a comment that ADUs are naturally affordable. And so I'm curious about that comment.
Yes, as part of our housing element, the cities in Alameda County all worked on this. There's basically a study that looks at what the actual affordability levels are of accessory dwelling units. And the study found for our county that ADUs are naturally affordable. They're not deed restricted. They don't have regulatory agreements that set their maximum rents. But they tend to, in Alameda County, be affordable compared to other market rate developments. And so we get credit in our housing element for affordable unit production for portions of our ADU production.
Perfect, thank you. The other questions focus on the market. So what I, what I took as a note is that out of all the factors that you threw up there, we control just a few. Is that, is that a fair summary?
That's, that's a fair summary. Thank you.
And that right now, the basic issues out of those, I'm going to say approximately 20 that you put up, that the core issues really are the macro issues right now.
I would say generally that the macro issues can have the greatest impact.
And that overall investors are just currently nervous.
That's a fair blanket statement. There, there's a number, your situation is not unique to other cities in California and throughout the US in that there are many places with many entitled projects that are not breaking ground and may not for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Okay, so I did not mean it for it to only be questions. I'm happy to take comments. I do, I have a, I do have a, I'm sorry. I do have one big picture question concern, and that's if we're going to be talking about the arts. That's actually about increasing fees. And I feel like we need to be thinking about this as a package in total so that we can be making off that explicit trade-off between we're going to increase these, we're going to decrease these. And I'm, so that's kind of a little bit of where I am right now. But I would like to come back to each of you to give your thoughts or further explore what I just said. So I'll go to Councilmember, I've got Councilmember Aguilar in here next.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. I had a question for Will.
Please proceed.
Thank you. You, you touched, or the mayor kind of alluded, and you touched on a subject with regards to entitlements and interest rates. We have a lot of entitled projects, and a lot of them have been delayed or five, some of them 20 years. What do you see in the future with regards to, I mean, do we foresee interest rates going down? And, you know, entitled projects getting, having, breaking ground soon? I know, I know you don't have a crystal ball in front of you, but it would be nice to kind of get some assumption as to what, what do we see in the future? And, you know, what can we do to help these developers to come in and build in our city? Thank you, Councilmember. I think the Dow is going to be at, no. So from a broad brushstrokes first, the market will at some point achieve equilibrium where it makes sense to build again. What drives that is anybody's guess, right? As, if there's a lack of new construction and population growth in the region, it doesn't have to even be within the city, rents will go up, right? And that drives feasibility from one perspective. Construction costs may go up over time due to inflation, right? Rents go up because of inflation as well, or generally speaking, competition. And so that, that will put pressure on, on, on not developing, if you will. At a certain point, if there's a slowdown in the economy or for whatever reason, interest rates come down, then investors will be satisfied with a lower rate of return. And that capitalization rate I talked about makes things more feasible. The capitalization rate, the rate of return is a really powerful multiplier effect, multiplier. And so that can drive a lot of feasibility to the extent that you've got projects on the cusp. And generally speaking, people think about developers being rich, greedy and profit-driven and only, well, they are profit-driven. And sure, greedy, great. They take a ton of risk, and you see many bankruptcies. That's, that's the risk that, that's the reality of the market, of the risk that they're taking. And in fact, I would go so far as to say developers are pretty poor judges of risk in many cases, or many developers are successful developers over a long period of time. So when you're at the margins, right? If you're in a economic environment where things are starting to change and you want to accelerate something, your fees can have an impact, right? If we go back to the example of a building that was worth $100 million four years ago and now be worth 75 million, you don't have enough juice in the game, if you will, with impact fees and those types of things to make a difference there. But if, if it's a difference of a few percent, and a few percent can matter when you're developing something that you might make 5% or 10% return on a development cost, that can matter, right? If you're in an environment, again, a point six, say, six years ago, you know, everything was looking great. We had long trends of increases in rent. Interest rates came down, were coming lower and lower, and so capitalization rates lower. And so if you're a developer looking forward to, you know, this is the time, this is it. And in that environment, as a developer, probably not as worried about those marginal percentages. But as we move from an environment, economic environment now where it's very difficult to have things pencil to things improving, you have an opportunity to nip around the margins, if you will. And so that's why I talk about flexibility and balance. Everything's balanced, right? Talk about art fee as an example. Art, I believe in the community helps increase the value of assets in that community, right? But then if you, the charging the fee makes it difficult to develop in that environment, potentially. But if you've got a strong environment, that's an opportunity where the market can absorb that. So you're, you're saying that imposing a 1% art fee will potentially hinder a development or detour a developer, developer from developing a city? It, it all gets thrown into the mix, I would say. And it's not, that, that may not be the straw that breaks a camel's back. But everything gets taken into consideration. And in a strong environment, it probably doesn't matter. And in a difficult environment, you know, it could be, if a developer's looking at a project and the numbers are just too tight, you know, it could be something that, that has an impact on their decision-making process. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolt, please.
Yes, I want to go back to what you had proposed a minute ago was we work on adjusting what we talked about, the fees now. My idea was that the 1%, and I could be wrong, and maybe that's not what everybody else wants to do, but that 1% would be outside of that. Because I don't know, I don't want to take away from our parks. And so I like, I like the idea of adjusting, everybody pays their fair share. But the 1% that we're talking about for the arts is, is, is an increase.
Through the mayor, I.
So is that a question or are we just?
No, I'm, I'm just saying now, like, that's, I would like to see that as a separate thing that we're not trying to pull out of what we're, I like the adjustments that we're talking about. Keeping our fees where we're at, where it's at, and then this is an addition to that.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. When you say keeping fees where they're at currently or keeping the fee decrease that's being proposed?
So, okay, so maybe I need to be clear then. I thought our idea was that we were going to shuffle, we're going to keep it. If it's at 10, we're going to keep it at 10. We're going to shuffle it around so everybody pays their fair share.
It is my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong. This is actually about decreasing fees. And while we have less money, the money that we do have will be flipped so that the majority is for park maintenance and improvements for the existing parks as opposed to acquiring new land.
Okay.
That the overall fee structure will be lower.
By, by, okay.
Can I bring the table up again?
Yes, please.
Restructuring. So if I could highlight for you right now, all multifamily units, regardless of size, would be charged an $18,000 per unit fee. You'll see that for larger units over 1,950 square feet, we're proposing a $25,723 per unit fee. So for the large units, the fees are increasing. For the substantially smaller units, the fees are greatly decreasing. So it is a restructure. And like you'll see the 20,679 for single family, that would correspond to the 1,650 to 1,950 square foot range. So for smaller units, it's a decrease, and for larger units, it's an increase. And the art discussion is separate from these fee amounts. And I would ask the council not to, I would ask the council to consider waiting to come up with a percent requirement until we've done our analysis. We're just asking for your blessing to dig into that topic and talk to stakeholders, including Will, and talk to developers. So we are not seeking direction on a percent requirement at this time.
So, but to clarify, because I made an assertion that the revenue would be down when we look forward at the construction that is currently entitled. So we have entitlements down at Bay Fair, we have entitlements by FH Daily. For the 2,000 some odd units that we currently have entitled, am I correct that this would actually decrease our revenue or am I misunderstanding this?
For apartments, yes, for for sale, single family. So Shoreline's a mix of some apartments, some for sale. For apartments, yes, it would generally decrease the overall. But if we don't get those projects built, we get zero. So it is a trade off to try to move the market and start actually getting some park revenue.
Okay, council, I don't, I have my own time, so council member Bolt.
Yes, no worries, because I think I still hear it the same way. But, and I'm fine with that, let's just send it back. And, but I'll just say it again, I'd like it to be outside, I would like it to be an increase. I agree with you, they're rich, greedy, and I'm just funny, you didn't say that, I'm just.
Okay, councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending SLMC Section 7-1-815 to update the city's parkland dedication requirements for residential subdivisions, adopt a resolution amending Administrative Code Title 8, Chapter 8 to update the parkland acquisition and park fee improvement. Fees establish fee waivers for ADUs and affordable housing units and approve the park development impact fee study and parks capital improvement plan and a resolution exempting ADUs from the development fee for street improvements. And then also moving with regards to public art requirement for new development to send that over to the rules committee to decide and figure out what we, you know, what would be a good percentage to assess on that aspect and conducting some research on that.
I didn't write all of that down, but basically it's adopt the recommendations plus direct that it be moved to rules with respect to art. Okay, so do we have any other discussion? Do I, I'm going to go to Councilmember Votus Walton next.
Yeah, I, I'll second the motion, but I just wanted to get some clarity as to the change in strategy in terms of the proportionality. It seems like the previous direction was to use these fees to acquire land. And I'm just trying to dig a little deeper as to, I mean, I love the parks and we have big capital needs on our, in our aging infrastructure, but I just wanted to kind of dig a little deeper in the change of strategy, right? What did we acquire with the previous funds and what prompted the change of strategy?
In the time, I've been here six years and we haven't acquired parkland to my knowledge. We also haven't amassed a lot of fees to generate for that. The Parks Master Plan really prioritizes adding improvements and making our existing parks function better and support new community members. And so we feel, and in consultation with the other departments, including Recreation and Parks and Public Works, it was determined that this restructuring would really support our capital, our capital improvement plan and our Parks Master Plan. Impact fees can be a little tricky because they're highly regulated, highly specialized, and they build up in these little pots that can only be used for specified purposes. And they aren't always very flexible or helpful, right? Unless you're amassing a lot of fees that are big enough for those capital projects. This makes us more nimble, so as fees come in, we can actually improve parks, commensurate with new development that's coming in. So that's the strategy and we're excited about it. We think it'll really help us make parks that are more responsive to the community members, both current and new.
I have a question about how these fees can be used. And a lot of community members use schools as de facto parks. They're open, we have use agreements with the school district. But many of these, many of these schools are essentially asphalt, just with little tiny bits of grass kind of in between. And I'm just wondering if we have use agreements, user agreements in place and we do kind of shift this funding structure of the impact fees, would we be able to use, to do some sort of agreement with the school district to do some greenery improvements? Because I just know that in practice, the community uses schools as parks on the weekends because the parks are kind of, you know, I'm just asking that question. It doesn't even have to be answered today because I'm bringing in kind of multiple uses for a facility we don't own, but we have a user agreement with. So I'm just going to, is it answerable a little bit or should we wait?
I think that we should wait because it's not an agendized item to discuss what we can require the school district. If it's a legal question about could these fees be used to support a third party organization, like the school district? Can I refer to that?
Sure, yes.
So just as a legal question, not for extensive discussion, because it's not agendized, that can fees like this be used or payments to a third party for use and improvement, for improvement of their facilities?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and council member. I think if properly structured, there could be a way to make that work.
Okay, well, I seconded the motion, so I don't want to be mean, but should I call the question?
No.
No.
Because I want to talk about this. So I got to tell you, I am personally a bit frustrated. And I'm frustrated in the following sense, because coming out of the committee, the committee said, let's bring this to the council to discuss. To discuss art, to discuss these particular fees and adjusting these fees, let's go and talk about it. And what we got back was an ordinance to reduce, to adjust art fees. We didn't get something for art. And to me, when you're talking about decreasing some fees and increasing other fees, that should all be considered together. Because what I don't want to see is that we go and we cut fees and they say, well, the environments were cutting fees, we can't increase fees. And that's fundamentally troubling to me because I think it's a package. And same thing with inclusionary housing. If all of this is how do we build housing, is let's throw everything together. It's not perfect enemy of the good, this really is. What are the core issues? Because I can tell you in the discussions that I've had, I've never had someone say, gee, your park fee is the problem. I've had other things that people talk about, but it's never been the park fees. And so I'm struggling because I feel like it should be a complete package. I don't think it needs to be a complicated complete package. But I think, I think that we should discuss it. So I am personally inclined to make an alternative motion, but I'm only going to make an alternative motion if there's any level of support for it. Because I don't want to, I don't want to create drama, but for me, I think that this should go back to rules so that we figure out how do we balance? And I think that we have the time, because as we heard from the consultant, there is, there are macroeconomic factors that are the core reasons why this stuff isn't happening. It has nothing to do with our park fees. This is the opportunity to really evaluate, how do we bring all of those things together? How do we make sure that we present a commitment to the arts at the same time that we make other fee adjustments or other changes so that we can have a comprehensive package? So I just, I'm going to make that motion. And if anybody weighs in as a second, then we'll talk about that. If not, then it will just die. So that is my motion. We send this back to rules.
All, I'm in the queue, but I'm not, I couldn't queue myself back in.
There we go. So as a matter of courtesy, I think councilmember Aguilar was in there.
Thank you. So can you clarify your motion? Is that to, I mean, because I just made a motion to have staff or direct this to the public arts portion to rules committee so that they can figure out and research adding 0.05% or 1% of developer in lieu fees to commit towards public art in addition to what we're, you know, what his staff is currently recommending? So.
All right. The clarification, clarification would be that I am looking to do that together. And so that in two, three, four, five, six months, we can come back as a council with a recommendation from the rules committee to say, we want to make these adjustments to the park fees, these adjustments to the art fees, if we need to make a tweak on the inclusionary ordinance. This is our package to drive investment and success in San Leandro housing. As opposed to doing it piecemeal, we'll do something over the next couple of months and something a year later. What I think I heard about art is that's going to be in two years. So it's just, no, if we really want to drive housing, we do it as a package and we do it three, four months from now. Because right now, today, over the foreseeable future, the driver has nothing to do with our park fees, it has everything to do with the macro conditions. Therefore, that's why I'm saying, let's review, let's send the whole thing back to rules. Does that clarify? Feel free to ask.
It, I feel like the motion that was made is kind of the same thing, but how quick will that recommendation with regards to in lieu fee discussion for development go to rules and come back to council?
So I think that I would be looking for us to make that recommendation, that we turn that with a specific time horizon. And staff can tell us that's not feasible, we can't do that, and we can explore that discussion. But right now, it really is, the motion is based on the principle that it should be a comprehensive package, not just a one-off.
Gotcha.
I'm going to go next in queue and let you contemplate that, Councilmember Votus Walton.
Well, I appreciate the whole policy package in terms of fees. I think what I'm struggling with in terms of the art, the percentage for art is that it wouldn't just include residential development, it would actually include other types of development. So that's what I'm struggling with, right? Because the art, the percent for art is a lot more expansive. There's a, the deputy director wants to add something, I don't know.
That's fine.
Okay.
We grappled with this and it was very clear to us, because this has been on the council work plan since fiscal year '23. And we heard from the former city manager how important art was going to be to this conversation about park fees and impact fees. However, even though we think of them as similar, the part, the art requirement isn't a fee. It's different than an impact fee, it's not governed by the same legal requirements as other types of development impacts, because you don't have an art impact when you build new buildings. You're not hurting art and needing to pay extra for the art impact. So that's why staff didn't bring it up as a package. We took impact fees, which are governed by certain legal requirements and have certain experts together. But in setting these park fees, we very much took into account this interest in an art requirement. So we looked at other cities that had art requirements, we looked at the cost of that to developers. It was part of the BAE market feasibility assessment. They determined that there would be room for these fees and an art requirement. So that's some of the background that led us to ask the question. You know, here are proposed fees and do you want us to go back and work on that art requirement now? But the art requirement is going to be a program, right? It's going to not just be a number on the fee schedule. It's going to be an actual program with commission review and community benefits. And so we just thought it was a different level of expertise and a different.
So I'm going to stop.
That was the proposal.
I'm going to stop you because we don't actually know that that's the case. One thing that's been proposed is just a 1% fee for the arts. And if you're saying that's not legally possible, would that be not permissible? I mean, we can also do these other things, but the question is, could we impose a 1% fee of project development be set aside for arts or art improvement at the site or offsite?
Let me try to elaborate, I think, on what Avalon's saying. The way that the art ordinance would be structured is it'd be an art in public places program. And the 1%, so it wouldn't be a fee that the city's imposing. It would be a requirement that the developer allocate a 1% valuation for art on their property or some sort of public art. Now, there's an in lieu.
So it would be a mandatory contribution to something?
To, it would be a requirement that they build something onsite. There'd be a valuation that was done by staff and they'd say, it's got to be something that is valued at this much. It wouldn't be funds necessarily just given to the city. Now, there would be an in lieu component where if they didn't build it onsite, they could contribute to an in lieu fund, but it would not be the same as this type of fee where it's, you come with your project and you pay the city a fee.
It's not literally an impact fee, but it is an in lieu fee?
It could be an in lieu fee. It's a requirement that there be a certain, a public art component of the project at a certain valuation of, it would be, you know, perhaps 1% or half percent. And then if that wasn't done as part of the project, they could pay theoretically an in lieu fee.
Perfect. I'm going to come back to you, Councilmember Votus. Is there anything else there?
No, I'm just keeping in, just what I've heard in terms of our conversation, I would want to propose just moving forward in the way that the original motion was made.
Coming to councilmember Bolt.
I'll second her.
You already have, you have a motion.
Oh, she, she called the question, so I wanted to second her.
No, I don't think she called the question, so coming back to councilmember Bolt.
You did call the question to make a motion, to vote.
Please clarify, councilmember.
No, I just, I'm just saying that the mayor made a motion and then he kind of said, is there any feedback? Or if there's no second, there's no second. And I'm saying there was a motion and I continue to support that motion, but I wasn't necessarily calling the question.
I thought you called the question earlier before his motion. Nevermind.
Councilmember Aguilar, councilmember Bolt.
Yes, okay, so in, in effort for us to all work together, I'm okay with what you're saying, as long as we put a time limit, like you said. If you say two months, three months, they come back with a total package, I'm good. Because the last thing I want is for us to be divided on this and it dies. Because that's what's going to happen right now if we don't get together. So if the compromise is, is that we got to wait two months, I'm 100% in. But they just got to come back as a full package. Because if we don't, then this thing dies and it's coming back in August, September, some point. And then if we decide at that point with two more people, now it's pushed further. So if we just get together and we say a two month or three month time limit for what you're saying, I will second that. But if you're not going to put a time limit to it, and I don't, I don't, because then I don't want the two years, you know?
Completely agree. So at this point in time, I'm going to amend the emotion, amend the motion to put a three month time constraint. But before making that commitment on behalf of city staff, I do want to talk a little bit with assistant or acting city manager, Mr. Yuan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of points on the discussion that you're having here this evening. A couple of points on the discussion that you're having here this evening. So I would say that if, if the proposal right now is to send the entire package, if you will, back to rules to vet and discuss in order to have a concrete proposal for you that includes research as well as outreach, staff will likely need more time than three months. I would say perhaps six months. I will also say, and this is more technicality than anything else, but last week at this time, staff was before you and presented to you an update on the housing and homelessness work plan. And this was one of the, the task of that housing homelessness work plan with a timeline to complete in the first quarter of this fiscal year. So obviously if you're going to push that out, we would ask for a little bit of grace from this council to push that out.
So elaborate on that last piece, please.
So there is an item, a deliverable as part of the housing and homelessness work plan to quote, support housing production. And one of the deliverable or one of the tasks for that deliverable is to complete development of impact fee amendments and market feasibility studies to support housing production. That's what's before you this evening with a completion date of quarter one of fiscal year 25, 26. So obviously if, if the action by this body this evening is to send it to rules for more elaborate discussion, we would ask for some grace to push that due date out to probably Q3 of fiscal year 25, 26.
Okay. Part of what I continue to be interested in is understanding the fiscal impact. So let's come back to, we're talking about adjusting the fees. So what is the anticipated change in revenue for our currently entitled apartments?
Um, may I go back to the.
Certainly.
Right now, we are not anticipating revenue because projects are not financially feasible. And so it is very impossible to, to truly compare. But if we look on a project by project basis, this sample was meant to show, you know, the, the delta for some of the projects. However, feasibility at the current rates is a major concern. Um, so I think it might be helpful to look back at the revenue we've received to see the variability. I think that it's possible we get more revenue if restructuring our fees enables some of these projects to actually move forward.
I think that's the big if, right? Because the question is over the next three months, next six months, next year, realistically, I don't think that the market conditions are going to change a lot. And so I feel like there is, I'll just call it false pressure. We don't have to make a decision to do something in the immediate future. I mean, we'll check a box on a timeline, but in terms of actually driving a change of projects in the city of San Leandro, whether we wait two months, three months, six months, or I'd argue even a year, it's not going to change the market of what's happening, the macroeconomic conditions. Do I think we should wait a year, Councilmember Bolt? No, I don't. No. But do I think that when you talk about six months, we're not, we're not changing what's happening in the market here in San Leandro? So to have like a comprehensive solution that considers all the things, we're going to increase this, we're going to decrease this, I think that's a far better outcome than today. I think what we're going to say is cut fees, adjust fees, but cut them essentially. And then there's not going to be appetite to increase, increase fees. So anyway, that's my proposal. I'd be, I'd be willing to have like a six month window because I think you can get a lot done in six months. So if there's not a second, it will simply die. So not seeing a second, then it shall die. So at this point, we have a motion from Councilmember Aguilar and we have to tweak that motion because what we have to do is separate out the art component because we cannot explicitly, I'm told, refer it as an action item, but we can just demonstrate consensus around that item since it wasn't an agendized item, right? It came out of committee in theory to be agendized, but I guess it didn't get agendized, right? As noticed in our agenda. Therefore, we're going to, I'm going to ask you if you're willing to adjust your motion to simply adopt staff recommendations and then we will express consensus on the other item.
Consensus on, excuse me, the direction on the public art?
What we do on public art. Yes. What we do about public art, that will be separate. That's just at least what I'm told by legal that we have to do. We have to break it out as opposed to.
Um, yeah, I, I think that's move forward with the recommendation and then we'll give direction to staff with regards to the, all the art requirement.
Councilmember Bolt, any further, no, nope. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
All votes are in. Motion passes 502 with Councilmember Simon and Vice Mayor Bowen absent.
At this point in time, my read of the room is that we would like a, this to go back to rules for scheduling the next couple of months and to return to council with an ordinance for, with an ordinance before the end of the calendar year. So I think I'm reading as a consensus, but I'm going to go kind of one by one to just kind of get a confirmation of that's kind of where you are. Get a head nod from Bolt, head nod from Aguilar, head nod from Azvino and a, and a thumbs up from Councilmember Votus Walton. So that is the, the direction from the city council. Okay. At this point in time, we're going to move to item number nine, which is our presentation with respect to the alternative response unit. For this item, we have, is it, there you are, Division Chief Bowie. Okay. So at this point in time, we are going to take a brief recess and where that brief
Okay, thank you for your patience. It's 9:17. We are back in session and we've got Division Chief Bowie here to present on item 9A. And for the benefit of the public, council member Azavito has excused himself. There you go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Paige Bowie, Alameda County Fire, here to present the six-month update on the Alternative Response Unit. I'm going to go fairly quickly through these first couple of slides. They're a review of what the program is all about, so I can get to the heart of the presentation. Briefly, program goals, I think as most are aware, reduce police response to nine long calls related to behavioral health requests, deliver appropriate and timely response to behavioral health calls, as well as bridge and facilitate service connections to those individuals, and decrease the number of unnecessary ER visits. So the details, this team operates for 40 hours, 10-hour days, Monday through Thursday. It's staffed with four personnel. We have access to two beds at Eddie's Place, which is a medically-supported emergency shelter. Some background, as well as some new information, when the unit first started, all calls went through SLPD, where they were screened for safety. In recent months, and over time, the team has begun to take some direct calls for service in select circumstances, usually where we know the client. For example, BART PD, Union Pacific. As the team gets to know more and more callers, they'll take direct calls for service. So eligible scenarios, everyone is aware of those. Exclusionary criteria, screen for safety is the general theme. So we'll move on here. Initial call data. So in the first six months, the average ARU response time was nine minutes. It averaged eight to 10 calls per day, and that's rising and also approaching maximum capacity. Average time on task is approximately 27 minutes, and in the first two quarters from team launch, the team answered 625 911 calls, initiated 121 follow-up visits, had 68 on-view calls, it's where a unit is driving and witnesses a person or client in need on the street and stops. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the team's also fielded 58 direct calls in the last three months. So the initial call data, as you'll see here, the call volume has gone up, generally speaking, as well as direct calls have begun really in February. We also had some increase there, a little different in April. So response types. So there's a strong trend towards increasing the number of calls that are either co-responses with San Leandro PD or instances where PD requests the ARU to the scene. This suggests the team is becoming more integrated, increasing trust with the dispatchers and the police officers. It's what we want to see. It's, in my mind, positive news. Eligibility, this is an interesting table. The total number of calls in this table here represents 24/7 call data from SLPD, so 168 hours. The ARU, for reference, operating 40 hours, that's 24% of that time. Basically, the team is, I would say, punching above their weight. They're responding to 30% of eligible calls. If you see the "in-service responded" row there, while only really being in service 24% of the time. Basically, SLPD codes whenever a call comes in that could be eligible for the unit, even when the team's not in service. So we wanted to track how busy could the team be if we're operating 24/7? In summary, the team is operating at very busy hours, but there is definitely a strong need for, I think, mental health response at all hours, is the general impression we're getting here. So client outcomes. Excuse me. So services were provided or referred to in 237 of the 654 outcomes tracked. You'll notice in April, referred to another service, that gray bar there, skyrockets. We noted that we were not properly tracking referrals in the first five months. And so referrals happen in conjunction with releases and in conjunction with transports. So you will see data moving forward from April on that referrals will go up and likely releases and transports will go down in conjunction. Just something to note as we go further with the program. Client needs of the clients served, 85% had their immediate needs met partially or fully by the unit at primary contact. What does that mean? So examples of fully met include transport to a desired location or diffuse a difficult situation. Examples of partially met included moved along or referrals, and not met was a complete refusal of service. All right. So client engagement. In the first six months, the ARU responded to a total of 416 unique, unduplicated clients. Of those 416, 56% generated, 56% of those clients generated about 1,800 contacts. Those include text messages, phone calls, emails, brief interactions that are not official calls. The point here is progressive engagement. It's a marker, really, of making inroads with clients with multiple longstanding barriers to finding housing, especially in the early months. And you will see, as we move on, the number of client interactions here in this slide shows that it's decreasing, which I believe is attributable to the ARU's aggressive follow-up nature. The more we can get help to certain clients, the less we interact with them. So initially, we're interacting quite a bit with clients. As we get them some more services, that drops. I just want to highlight a few of the partners and the ways in which we're going about this. The first one is Eddie's Place, which is our contracted partner with two beds. 14 clients were transported there. Enhanced care management offers more wraparound service to folks with complex or medical or social needs that have medical insurance. As of six months, we had eight petitions submitted, seven accepted. That number has since risen. Care Court, we've also been very, very aggressive in. It's a civil court program aimed at people with untreated psychotic disorders. This offers community-based services. It generally tries to be very voluntary. We've submitted nine petitions in the first six months, and as well as assisted families submitting 12. That number's also risen since then. So at Eddie's Place, of the 14 that we transported, 10 remain. They're either still at the shelter in that bed or on a different path, usually to longer-term care. You can read there some of the outcomes. And I do want to talk about one of the success stories we have with Care Court. So Dana was in urgent crisis, facing eviction, had serious mental health issues, history of psychiatric holds, dangerous behavior. She also lived in an apartment building, so her residents were highly concerned as well for their own safety. This was one of the first Care Court petitions filed in Alameda County. The team worked very closely and very hard with the landlord of the courts, first responders, SLPD, ACSO, to secure compassionate eviction process. They secured storage for her belongings, found a two-week motel voucher as a short-term solution. Unfortunately, on the last day, but it turned out to be a blessing, she caused damage to the hotel room and was arrested. But because there was a Care Court act in process already for this client, they were able to secure temporary conservatorship, and she was able to enroll at a local mental health facility. Months later, she completed treatment and transitioned to more stable housing at Amber House. She attended a family baptism. She is still in contact with the team. In fact, telling them, "Thank you for caring enough to help me even when I didn't want it." This client is one, and there's other examples like that, but really did a complete 180. I think many people were ready to give up, but it just goes to show that if you work the process correctly, you know, success can happen. I'd like to share one more success story, but I'll bring up SLPD Captain Khan.
Thank you, Chief Bowie. This is yet another example of a multi-agency success story that involves PD this time around. Historically, Deborah is a client that called 911 many times a day. I'll give you some statistics towards the tail end. Deborah is a lonely person with some medical problems, although their family collectively declined services. She has children that we contacted who declined also to assist, and this truly impacted our staff time. In the span from January of this year to June 10th, the San Leandro Police Department received 352 911 calls from Deborah directly. Calls typically came when her partner was away doing errands and she was left home alone. As a result of those 352 911 calls, 116 calls were generated that required first responders to come out. That included police, fire, and ultimately, the ARU response. This is truly an example of empowerment for our staff. Normally, our dispatchers are not actively involved in case management. Because of the great positive working relationship our 911 dispatchers have had with the ARU unit, they developed a plan and started the next phase, which is a collaboration between County Emergency Medical Systems Kaiser, which is the primary caregiver for Deborah, Adult Services, and Human Resources and ARU. After multiple visits, multiple consultations and meetings, we are absolutely ecstatic to say that Deborah is now in a memory care unit at a local senior facility, and there's been a noticeable positive impact from our dispatchers because they felt like they actually collaborated with ARU in resolving this issue from significant 911 calls from one party to none whatsoever.
Thank you, and I'll just wrap it up here with a few more slides, some data here. So summary of services provided per month. The bulk of what the team does falls into these broad categories: general support, transports, referrals, and then handing out of necessities. General support includes listening, talking, providing temporary refuge. Summary of transport destination per month. Behavioral health and shelter, no surprise there, those are the top two. We also provide courtesy transportation and then minimal legal services as well. Both the shelter and behavioral health destinations number in the many of dozens, using city and county resources. So some notable shelter connections you'll see here, Eddie's Place, our partner. Many want to be transferred home if they do have a home. I will say, when the warming shelter was open, that was very popular, as well as now. It was not open when his data was collected. The Navigation Center has been a wonderful partner as well, and we've got many clients on that list as well. Lastly, though, I just want to close. I know we provided some unique examples, and there's just one client, but it really is a complex interplay of factors. Homelessness, it's a combination of poverty, lack of affordable housing, mental health issues, substance use disorders, and experiences of trauma. The recovery journeys are nonlinear, and it really takes them. The success we've had is based in trust, patience, and long-term commitment. There's a need for interdisciplinary approaches, and the city is doing that. Experts advocate for comprehensive strategies that combine healthcare, social services, and legal support. And the ARU touches all three of these. We have Eddie's and other providers, Care Court with legal support, Navigation Center and others as well. There are no swift solutions. This team will not solve homelessness, but I do think it's part of the long-term solution. I've been watching this team for eight months, and I'm convinced that they're a huge part of it. Progress can be slow, and at times, some of these stories are heartbreaking, but they're out there. They're doing the work. And not many others are. I talked to other, you know, county workers that are in this field, and they commend San Leandro for our communication and our collaboration and commitment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to do very quickly, see if we have any public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, we only have two hands up online and no public comment in person.
Okay, let's take the online commenters, please.
Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. I'm glad we got to this item, even though it was postponed since the last meeting. It's amazing, like overwhelming success beyond, you know, our wildest dreams. And I think that this pilot program has proven the model. And I think, even though, right, there's a year more in the pilot timeframe, it's time to start planning now for expanding this program. So can we get it beyond four days a week? Can we get it to 24 hours a day? You know, and we need to plan to extend beyond the pilot period. And, you know, the funding for this is complex, so that all has to be worked out. But it does kind of beg a question in my mind. I think it's really positive to see the team nature of this, to see the fire department, the paramedics, and the San Leandro Police Department all coordinating, kind of feeling each other out, finding out what, you know, kind of what the parameters are in, you know, and like we've seen in other cities, like Eugene, this is the way it goes in order to save important police resources. But, you know, in a limited world, in a world of limited budget, of limited money, you know, like what do we want to spend our time on? It's not a competition, but there is a balance in there somewhere. And so in order to extend this program and increase its capacity, money has to come from somewhere. And it just makes me wonder, well, do we really, how many more police officers do we need to add? Or do we need to add more police officers in comparison to these mental health first responders? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
So thank you. Because of the Alternative Response Unit, San Leandro is a better place. This is how you make positive change. I'm just so grateful that this is happening and for the people who do this work. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
There's public comment and come back to council members for questions, discussion. Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Chief, for this presentation. My question is with regards to those folks who have severe mental health issues. What is the status on that? And is there any way, I know, you know, you have a client success story of Dana who had a history of psychiatric holds, but what about the other Danas who basically cannot help themselves? Like, what do we do to help get them the services that they need?
Not an easy answer. I mean, if we could afford more beds at a place like Eddie's, they can take those types of patients. I am a little bit optimistic. Senate Bill 43, I believe, which is supposed to be adopted by the county, probably likely in January, will expand the definition of gravely disabled, which will allow holds to be for more patients, really. Which I know there's clients out there that the team has identified that they wish they could push in that direction, but were just not there yet. So that's something that's coming down the pipe.
Gotcha. I think that's one of the, you know, we can help guide those. It's just tough to try to help those that can help themselves, and I think that's something that we need to focus on. But it's nice to see the success stories. And, you know, I think had we had this five or six years ago, you know, Steven Taylor's name could have been on here as a success story. But because of what transpired, you know, it's great to see that the work that we're doing in advocacy, and thank you for spearheading this ARU and the great success that we do. I think just these success stories say a lot in helping to transform and change lives in the community, but thank you for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vivethos Walton.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I'm not asking for this data now, but I'm just wondering if you are tracking other demographic data? I'm particularly looking at, you know, like number of women versus number of men. They just have very different types of care that they may need, whether they are LGBTQ youth or not, just to ensure that when we place them in the continuum of service, that they're actually getting culturally appropriate care. Are you tracking these other data points?
Yes, with some reservation. I need to double-check. I think we're tracking most of those. Probably not quite all of what you've mentioned, but those are usually stats we do gather. I do need to confirm that, though.
Okay, I'm specifically concerned about LGBTQ youth who have a higher incidence of homelessness, and especially in the Bay Area. I don't know if that's the case here in San Leandro, but that's definitely something that I'm particularly concerned. I'm pretty sure you're already tracking gender or whatever a way a person identifies, but gender would be one. And I, I'm just gonna combine my questions and comments into one. I don't have five minutes' worth of questions. But I do want to commend Mayor Gonzalez for adding our name to the Measure W Fund letter to the county. I think Measure W would go a long way in ensuring that these types of pilot programs that are proven effective and kind of all of the different places where these folks land, whether it's our Navigation Center or Eddie's Place or any other of the services that are in the continuum of care, especially for folks who are unhoused. Just want to commend you for that. Thank you for advocating for our fair share of, I think it's 600 million, but I think they're going to release 400 million. I'm not sure. Thank you so much for your work, Chief, in getting this off the ground, and to our police department also for collaborating and ensuring that we try a new approach, and it seems like we're in the right direction, and just really want to commend you for that. I know that this was funded, I believe, through the next fiscal year, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Councilmember Reverse Walton, this is funded for this fiscal year. And then council will need to provide staff direction on what to do for subsequent years.
For fiscal '27? For fiscal '27?
For fiscal '26, '27, that's right.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Again, I just want to ensure that we continue to do this work, but also think about some of the data collection and ensuring that we kind of look at high-risk populations such as, you know, LGBTQ youth. Thank you.
Councilmember Bolt, please.
Yes, thank you. I will echo that thought. You know, that's an important demographic that seems to fall into this category all too often when we're talking about, you know, collecting the data to see how we can help more. So I echo that comment. This is a very deep, dark, you know, tough subject to approach. And the idea that you guys are going out there, I remember at the ribbon cutting, or I don't know what we called it, the commencement ceremony, just the smiles on the teams' faces and like their passion for what they were getting ready. Well, they had already been doing it, but what they were getting ready to embark on, and that's a, you know, that's a mentally draining field to have to deal in this every day as fire and SLPD have to do, and paramedics for that matter. But the idea that we have people with compassion and a smile showing up instead of somebody in a different uniform, and sometimes with a gun. I mean, I don't think we can quantify the meaning of that and, you know, the de-escalation immediately of what's going on. So thank you for all the work you're doing. Thank you for highlighting some success stories. I know, I'm positive that there's more that we just don't have time to go over, but I look forward to the many more that we will hear about in the future because if we're just saving one life in this, if we're just getting one person off the street, if we're just getting one family back together, if we're just getting somebody, one more person back into, you know, a functioning daily atmosphere for themselves and their family, it's worth every dollar we throw at it. So thank you for all the work you do. I don't have any questions. I just commend you. I just commend you and your team for what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a correction to Councilmember Vivas Walton's question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, with the assistance of Human Services Director Jessica Lobodon, looked into this a little more. Turns out this program is actually funded for this biennial, not this fiscal year. So through fiscal year '27, through June 30th of 2027.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got just a couple of questions. And I love the use of specific examples, because it helps us drill down. I'm particularly curious about what was preventing, I'll use the name Deborah that you put up there, the frequent flyer. As they're sometimes referred to, those that call 911 a lot, frequent caller, frequent flyer, I've heard different euphemisms. What was preventing that individual from getting the help that she needed? What was the real core impediment? And I see Captain Khan running up here with a big smile on his face. I think he's ready for this.
Oh, I'll let him start.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, part of the issue was the fact that it is a medical issue. So it isn't something that you can put essentially a psychiatric hold. And as the chief mentioned, average staff time the ARU is spending per call is nearly 30 minutes. 30 minutes that genuinely our officers can or can't, depending on the call for service that they have, their first responders, and fire department potentially does not have. And this is not just a 30-minute, one-time event that essentially solves the problem, it's multiple times in the course of several months. Something that ARU is very well-trained at and has the ability to invest in. And I think that's the key factor here, is that it's the same group of individuals that are making contact with the same client at multiple occasions, spending that significant amount of time and workload that our officers sometimes don't have the ability to do.
Thank you. Any other color there?
I'll just add as well, so much of what we have to do is voluntary on the client's behalf. They have to agree. And Deborah, for so long, was not willing. It really took a lot of convincing and interactions to get that voluntary agreement from both her and her spouse.
I think you made a reference. Am I correct that she was the one that went to memory care unit?
Correct.
Was she cognizant of her state?
It was declining. I'm not sure.
Okay. Let's go back to the other one. We heard the terminology compassionate eviction for Dana. Some people might say any eviction's not compassionate. So, you know, help us understand what we mean by compassionate eviction.
In this case, the ARU had built a relationship such that she trusted that she would be taken care of, her belongings, which is a big deal for many people, would be taken care of and stored safely. With so many of these folks, it's the details and the little things that matter, and the team is able to take that time and provide that in follow-up investment. And I think the team honestly helped the landlord as well. He had some legal issues, the paperwork wasn't filled out properly, so all of those little steps on both sides. I think she came to see that she would be in good hands, and it was a better situation that the eviction was happening.
How did we ultimately pay for the storage of her things? Do you know?
I do not know.
Okay. And then her final outcome, can you remind me?
Her final outcome was at Amber House, which is more of a stable housing facility.
Is that at the, up at Fairmont?
I'll have to look at Jessica for a moment. It's in Oakland. Oakland.
At Oakland, okay, thank you. And I also want to give my thanks for the work you're doing. It's very difficult work, and I think that we just need to keep tracking, tracking the stories, tracking the examples, figuring out what works. My primary interest in all of this right now, from an operational perspective, is what are those core barriers? So when you talk about SB 43, I've heard about this kind of broadening of definitions, because as policymakers and as advocates in Sacramento and in DC, understanding what changes need to be made, such as that proposed change, to make the system work is the guidance that we need. Because you're out in the field catching 416 unique individuals, 416 unique stories, but there are clearly patterns that emerge from those stories. And just making sure that that feedback loop exists, that it comes back to us. And the other thing, I'll just kind of make a gratuitous plug, because tomorrow, the Board of Supervisors is evaluating in a special session, a special meeting, how much of that money to actually allocate from Measure W to homelessness services. So we, as the Alameda County Conference of Mayors, took a position that said the vast, vast, vast majority of that money, if not all of it, should go to these very services. And I would encourage each of us, I am literally unable to do it tomorrow because I am in the air, but I would encourage each of us to dial in and speak up, speak our piece, to say that we believe that that money should go to homelessness, homelessness services, so that we can be continuing to support these efforts and not worry about funding. My last question, comment for you will simply be, have you, the team more broadly, thought about grant applications? Because once you have success stories, once you're able to show data, it becomes easier to get funding from external sources, from philanthropy and the like. So is that something that's on your radar already?
Yes, we're exploring that.
Okay. That is all that I have, so we will close this item and move to our next piece. And thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
The next item is Item 10A, which we moved, Council Request to Schedule Agenda Items. Did you receive any requests? Okay. So at this point in time, we will go to our penultimate item with City Council Reports, Calendar, and Announcements. Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. On Wednesday, July 9th, I attended the 1,138th meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. We discussed and approved the employment agreement of the General Manager, Ryan Klosenser. We had a presentation by Judith Pierce, who is our educational and outreach person at Alameda, at ACMD. We also received the ACMD Award for Government Finance Officers Association Certificate on our Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual Comprehensive Financial Report of the Fiscal Year, which ended in June 2024. And then we also, with regards to West Nile virus, we have no new West Nile virus cases to report. So this month, 34 birds were tested, none were positive for West Nile virus. This month, 133 mosquitoes collected from the traps were tested for West Nile virus, St. Louis Encephalitis virus, and Wester Inquin Encephalitis virus. None of the mosquitoes tested positive for any of these viruses. And the Alameda County Public Health Department reported one human case of a mosquito vectored tropical disease in Alameda County this month. And then on Thursday, July 10th, I attended the National Negativ Cities LGBTQLO meeting with regards to bylaws amendments. On Friday, July 11th, I attended the San Leandro Pride here in downtown San Leandro. We had a great show. There were a lot of folks who were excited to see the second annual pride take place here in our city. A lot of folks were very impressed and loved the performances, and I think the entire lineup was amazing, with RuPaul's Drag Race star performer, Jax, coming to perform here in San Leandro and downtown. And then on Saturday, I attended the big, excuse me, meeting, and received an award for the work that I've been doing with regards to the work that I've been doing in San Leandro, given by Bernard Ashcraft. Talked about, you know, what is going on with ICE, gave folks some information as to when our meeting is for rent stabilization and when to attend those meetings, and also gave folks some information with regards to beautification at Victoria Court. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Bolt, please.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm going to go backward. So on the 16th, Oakland Airport Community Management Noise Forum meeting, discussing different avenues we can take with, they got some upgrades coming to the runways, so we're gonna, you know, west end of San Leandro is going to be under the flight path for about three days, but, you know, it's work that needs to be done. And I know a lot of people get frustrated with the flight pass and the forward notice they give to the city or the community, and it's not very good, so that's a topic of discussion for the next one, is how we get that word out when they're going to change their flight pass. I did attend the LGBTQ event on Friday, the 11th, and I will say that the, I forget what they called it, but it was like this dog show that they did with all the cute little dogs dressed up. And for me, that was like the highlight of the day. It felt like the crowd really liked it, and it was, you know, well-attended. So I commend the city for that work that they did to put that on. That was a good event. And then lastly, July 9th, I thought we may had talked about this last week, but we didn't. I attended the Mayor's Conference with Mayor Juan Gonzalez for Alameda County mayors. I will say, our mayor did a great job of representing our city, speaking about ways to engage with the development community. Our development team was there. There were quite a few staff members there that just, it felt really holistic. It felt like it was a good team put together, doing good work, and really highlighting our city. They did a tour of the Speedway, Bay Fair Speedway, so we got to see a couple of the different new entities over there. And all in all, I just, I thought it was a good job, and the mayor stepped in to take over and chair that meeting and did a great job. So kudos to you, and thank you to the staff and all the work you guys did for that meeting, because I think it went off without a hitch, in my opinion, as an attendee, and hopefully that's the way it really was on the inside. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, so I will wrap that. I'm bringing us home. Here we go, rounding the corner. With respect to that last piece, I chaired that meeting because I have been recently elected as the Vice President of the Alameda Mayor's Conference. I have also, on Wednesday night, I was elected the Vice Chair of Ava Community Energy, and will continue to represent San Leandro's interests, both as a board member and as Chair, as Vice Chair. One of the more interesting kind of government agencies that I attend and support is the Bay Area Air District, where there's a balancing act between ensuring that we have clean air, at the same time, not stifling development. And there's been a lot of tension, because audit findings have shown that permits take an unusually long time to get approved. And there's just been some frustration that's grown through time. The Board of the Air District has focused on accountability, measurables, and the team, I'll just say the Vice, I don't know her exact title, Dr. Meredith Bauer, offered an excellent presentation on process improvement, investments that are being made, and specific metrics and targets to be hit to drive process improvement at the Air District. They are posting dashboards, so everything is measured, and they're going to be holding themselves accountable to greater throughput and reducing the backlog of outstanding permits. And so if anybody wants to check that out, that was last Wednesday, Finance Administration, that's a recorded meeting. So if you want to see a great example of how government can pivot and start delivering on a clear set of measures, it's a great meeting to watch. I did have the benefit of touring Central Callan, the new development that has now opened in downtown San Leandro. I will say that it was very much of a wow sort of experience, to say, wow, this isn't San Leandro, in terms of the quality of the amenities, the fact that the giant courtyard in the middle offers natural lighting to the units. So it's really a visually beautiful place to live, and that it offers the kind of amenities ranging from conference spaces to gyms and all sorts of social gathering spots. Sunday, September 21st, the autumnal equinox, San Leandro will be the beneficiary of Sun Day. So there will be a gathering in the City of San Leandro at the San Leandro Boys and Girls Club, celebrating solar power, and folks from around Alameda County will come to the City of San Leandro. So I would encourage residents to mark that day on their calendars, Sunday, September 21st. Very grateful for all the volunteers and staff that spent a Saturday morning working to beautify Victoria Circle. We had donations by the local bakery, As Need Bakery, and by the ice cream shop. Is that, no, the other one, right there in Victoria Circle, is that Lord's? Lord's at Victoria Circle. So thank you for the businesses, thank you for all the volunteers, for staff for giving up a Saturday to really keep driving pride in our community. Speaking of pride, I did also attend the second pride event, and I just thought that, you know, it was growing, more people, more activity, more energy, and so I think we are setting the right tone in San Leandro. So again, final reminder, please, tomorrow, Board of Supervisors, Alameda County Board of Supervisors, discussing the Measure W monies. Please make your voice heard, that the vast majority, if not all of that money, should go to specifically address homelessness. That's the way it was pitched to the voters here in Alameda County. And so now we want to hold the Board accountable to make sure that that's exactly how the money gets used. So with that, there are no further reports. We'll move to Item 13, Adjournment, and our current time is nine